There's always something with these things.
I don't know. Okay, I don't have any idea. This has never happened before in my life. Look at that. Oh, this is a mess. Okay. That has never happened. My computer, I told them I need a new one. It's blackened out and quit on me a couple of times. Shut it all the way down. All right, we're gonna call the work session of May 21st, 2019 order shortly after 5 o'clock. Just want to send a message from our supervisor, Brenda Stumbo, who's had a death in the family, so she's not gonna be here, and she's traveling, so just remember her and your prayers and her family. I guess it was her aunt of, there was 14 siblings, and she was the last one, so it's really sad. We have the regular agenda for the work session, but we've had a special, we have a couple of special requests with guests in the audience, and one is Megan, who's here from the Washtenaw County Parks and Rec. If it's all right with the board, we'll have them go first, and then have the bonding folks go first from YCUA, and then we'll do, go back to the regular work session agenda. If that's all right with everybody? All right, so it's all yours about the skate park.
Well, thank you for having us today.
There's a mic here. The only way the person doing the minutes isn't here, and so you really need, if you could just give your official titles, maybe spell your last name for her, it would be great.
It is a doozy. Is it on?
Yes.
So, thanks for having us. I'm Megan Bonfilio. That's B-O-N-F as in Frank, I-G-L-I-O. And then with me is Trevor Staples with the Tony Hawk Foundation. So, we prepared just a brief presentation for you tonight, one, giving an overview of how we got in front of you, basically a little bit about the process that led us here, and then kind of moving forward. And I know the skate park agreement is on your regular agenda for later on tonight. So, I think Trevor's gonna start?
Good afternoon. Oh, how do I move this forward? This one? Okay, so, we don't, we were unclear on how much you know about the project, or how much you've been involved with the process so far. So, we have some things that are pretty basic to start with. Speed us along, or ask questions if you have them along the way. So, skateboarding in general, just overall, the reason skateboarding is important for our community. I live in Ann Arbor, and I was the lead advocate for Ann Arbor Skate Park, and have been helping with this project since the beginning. We have, it's a competitive sport, of course. There are many skaters in the community. Oftentimes, you don't see the skaters because they're skating in places where, let's just say those places weren't designed to be skate parks. So, you might not see them as much. It's more unsafe to skate there, but they're there. A nice thing about skateboarding is, is that it costs a small amount of money to get involved in the sport. Getting a complete skateboard and a helmet could cost, you know, maybe $80, $50, somewhere around there, and it lasts for a long time. So, it's a relatively cheap sport to get into. We're looking forward to the 2020 Olympics when skateboarding is making its debut in the Olympics. So, the sport is gonna just explode after that, we assume, especially women's skateboarding. And most skaters, many skaters, don't think of it as a sport, but more of a lifestyle. It's a way of life. And they live their life as skateboarders, and I'm 51, and some of my best friends that I still have were made from skateboarding in my teens and twenties. So, these are some benefits of recreation. I don't know, Megan, if you want to talk about that. It's sort of basically, probably know a lot about this.
So, I think the benefits of recreation, you all know, and I think you've heard that in my discussions with you all. We are facing a childhood obesity epidemic. Skateboarding and action sports are something that really can be utilized by kids in this community, adults in this community, and millions worldwide. So, there has been a push in the recreational industry, which is my area, towards more casual recreation and not such organized sports. One, because it's more cost-effective to go that way. We have seen a lot of push towards trails and a little bit more passive recreation over the years. But in addition, things like skate parks really help the skateboarding BMX community and other small wheeled sports. And so, there is an estimate that we found out there that about 15 million skateboarders exist in North America alone.
And one thing you'll see skate parks, too, is that's unique, is all ages. Well, not competing, but doing the sport together. So, you'll see a six-year-old and a 60-year-old both using the same bowl or ramp or something like that. So, a little history of this specific project. So, I started with the Tony Hawk Foundation about a year ago, and right about that time, when these grants were coming about, Mauricio Mejia, who has come to the Parks Commission and presented, he's a high schooler, and he contacted me and wanted to know how to get a skate park built. The Prospect Park Skate Park in the city of Ypsilanti is too far for him to travel to. He doesn't drive yet. And so, he met with me, and we had a meeting with some city council members and started that ball rolling. Also Cory Spivey, who, that's a picture of Cory there. He was a youth that helped us develop the Ann Arbor Skate Park, and now as an adult, he's been working as the lead advocate for the Ypsilanti Township Skate Park all along the way, since almost a year ago. So, the funding and the project management, it's sort of a lot of different entities involved. I work for the Tony Hawk Foundation. What we do is offer technical assistance and some funding. These larger grants, the Built to Play Grants for the $250,000 in matching funds, are funded by the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation. So, there's funding and technical assistance there, and then with some help from the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission, there's also technical assistance and the other half of the money. Up to, well, it's $500,000. So, some of the criteria, do you want to talk about that?
So, kind of enter, we're going back and forth, sorry. So, enter Washtenaw County Parks. So, in June of 2018, that's when we heard from Mauricio, from Cory, from Trevor, the opportunity to apply for this Tony Hawk Foundation grant, which the Washtenaw County Parks provided the full match. We wrote the grant and then received the grant. And then since that time, we've been working with the local skate park advocates. One of our very first things we needed to do was try to determine a suitable site for the skate park. There's a couple of different criteria for that, but really, it's ideal if it's near some multi-use park or recreational amenity, nearby neighborhoods and accessibility, so people can get there, and it's, you know, it's within the community, visible to others, you know, a very visible element, nearby food and drink, because people will be there for a long time, and so they would like to be able to take a break, go get something to drink, go get some food, come back. And very important to our group was it was approved by the community advocates in the east side region. So, that group consisted of quite a few individuals from the city of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township, Superior Township, and then some folks from Ann Arbor that worked there as well. That picture on the lower right is one of our meetings that we had at Olympia Skate Park Shop or Skate Shop. I've just been overwhelmed with the support and the interest from the community when we've done these public meetings thus far. So, as a result of that, those meetings that we had and kind of working with our local skate park advisory committee, which is comprised of individuals from Ypsilanti Township, the city of Ypsilanti, Superior Township, and then core members of the skate park group, it was determined that the Community Center Park was the ideal spot. And so, we have been very thankful for your support and interest in this partnership with us. Really, it checks all those boxes. So, as you know, it's just right there in the corner, Clark and Midway, already next to a very vibrant, active park. And we see this as a, you know, a perfect kind of blank slate for us to be able to really work into the skate park development. So, the next step, once we were able to secure the location, and thank you for that again, we worked on the RFP process. So, developed a request for proposal, and we had seven skate park design build companies submit proposals on April 23rd. That's a big deal lately. We have submitted projects or RFPs out there that we've received nothing back on. So, we were excited to see how much interest was out there. All those proposals were reviewed by our skate park advisory committee. And then we, after kind of lots of discussion, we have recommended moving forward with a design build team that had great project understanding, good creativity and approach to this project, had a robust community engagement process, experience and expertise in skate park design. And really, a lot of it was, have you skated their parks? What do you think about them? So, we were really kind of granular on that. And then, very important for us in our office is experience with environmental design. We'd really like to highlight this as a stormwater and green infrastructure park, because it is adding concrete. And then, of course, we did reference checks. So, out of that, we recommended New Line Skate Parks. They are a Canadian company, but they also have offices here in the United States. But they ticked all those boxes again for us. We're really impressed with them. Their, what really set them apart was their approach for working with the community. They have committed to four meetings in person, so basically kickoff meeting, then they'll be doing community input meetings where they'll talk a little bit about, you know, what is a skate park? What kind of elements would you like in this amenity? And then take that feedback back, create a design, bring that design back, show folks, hey, this is what we heard from you. Kind of, it's an iterative process, and then they'll go back, do some more tweaking, and then again, a final design. So, concept design development, community input meetings, detailed design and construction drawings for us. And then, they will also be doing the construction. That's what's really great about working with these design build contractors. And so, then construction would be approximately eight to 10 weeks at that point. So, some examples of what New Line has done in the past. Skate parks are not kind of, I think, what some people think of them in their mind. They really are some creative art pieces. There's some amazing skateable elements that you can see. They really, you can, the one on the lower right-hand corner, I'm just amazed at, you know, it's not just concrete. You can see, this one doesn't show it as well, but there's a project that they had in Portland that not only integrated the stormwater management, but made that stormwater management element a part of the skate design. So, you can kind of teach and skate at the same time. And this is another couple of examples of some elements they have. Yeah, so, did you have anything to add before we go to next steps?
Just a little bit on the green aspect, the environmental aspects of the skate park. The Tony Hawk Foundation and Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation are adding some funding into these skate park projects. Right now, it's slated to be about $50,000 for environmental practices and features in the skate park. So, I've been working with Megan to work out how we might do that and incorporate that in. And actually, the consultant that we have working on the project to help us with the environmental aspects was actually part of the design of the New Line Skate Park that she just mentioned in Portland. So, it's a really good match, and we hope to make this a model for other skate parks, to show what can be done with what seems like a lot of concrete to be poured, but make it better environmentally.
In addition to that, we have worked with the Water Resources Commissioner's Office and have applied for another grant that's close to $100,000. That would be another element for stormwater design. We do not know if we've received that yet, but I understand we've been shortlisted for the project, so keep your fingers crossed. But that will help us do more with those construction dollars, so we can kind of offload the stormwater work and keep that kind of in a separate grant, and then put all of the efforts into building the skate park. So, that's good news. So, stay tuned for more information there. Next steps would be to execute the agreement that's on your agenda for this evening. That agreement outlines that Washtenaw County Parks, where you received the grant, will do all of the construction work, including, you know, the RFP, the design, the build, oversee the building as a construction manager. And then, it would be turning that back over to Ypsilanti Township for long term. And then, we would also be working on holding the public engagement sessions with New Line that we're currently working on getting them under contract. That would be doing the design and engineering. All of that would occur over summer and fall. Hopefully, we could do some construction yet this late fall, but primarily in next spring. And then, at the end of all of that, and this is something that also really stood out for me, was that New Line will be helping us to develop a maintenance plan, basically a maintenance agreement that you all will be able to follow and be able to see what are the recommended maintenance frequencies, understanding some of the nuances, things to look for, and maybe write some regular maintenance checks. And so, really, I think that's the thing that stood out for me with New Line, is their relationship-based approach. They'll be able to be instrumental in helping us during design and construction, but then also long-term for you all as a resource and asset in the long-term maintenance. And then the last thing.
So, and let me just add something on to that last slide, too. What I'm gonna be working with the township on, too, is also helping with programming at the skate park afterwards. And the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation is interested in helping fund programming after these skate parks are built. We're building 20 of them in Western New York and Southeast Michigan. So, that's an exciting feature of it, too, where we can get started right away with getting kids' equipment and instruction and things like that. So, I'm excited about that. So, this last part is just an opportunity that I'd like to present to the board as part of International Go Skateboarding Day weekend. We're having a series of events to showcase Ralph C. Wilson Jr. and Tony Hawk Foundation projects in the area. One of them is our five-year anniversary of the Ann Arbor Skate Park Riverside Parks grand opening in Detroit, the ribbon cutting. And what would be really great would be to have a sort of ceremonial groundbreaking for the Ypsilanti Township Skate Park on that Friday, Go Skateboarding Day, to kick off this weekend of events. It would be a really good way to show what's going on here and focus on the township and kick off the whole weekend of events. There'll be some pro skaters here. There's actually a, John Kelly from the LA Rams is a skateboarder, too, and he's gonna be here. He's from Detroit, so he's gonna be coming and being part of this. So, we'll have skateboard demos and contests and music and all kinds of things going on. Also Chandler Park that Friday night in Detroit is kicking off their whole project, so they're starting with their fundraising that evening. So, assuming the board does approve the agreement later tonight, I'd like to talk to you about how we can schedule that and get that into the whole mix of this series of events for that weekend next month.
That's it. Any questions for us?
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, I'm sorry, just, or clerk, I don't know. If you guys, would you mind just emailing us the PowerPoint?
Sure.
Thank you, and I appreciate both of you and all your work, and I'm excited. I live right down the street. I don't know if I can skateboard, but.
Yet.
Someone told me they'd teach me. We'll see if he's up for the challenge. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Madam Clerk, thank you for coming and presenting this presentation. I think this is a really exciting opportunity for our township, and especially for you. And also, I didn't even know about the two that you were doing in Detroit, or at least your foundation. So, I think that's pretty awesome. I know Chandler is on the east side anyway. So, yeah, that's nice. I guess only other comment or question I would have is, how have you seen, I guess you could say, not only users, but visitors to skate parks pick up over a course of time? Maybe that's one to three years after a skate park is built.
So, like I said, in Ann Arbor, so I live in Ann Arbor. I'm from Ann Arbor. And as the lead advocate, I was involved with the skate park for the last 10 years before it was built. We've seen just, it's hugely popular. There are people there all the time. We have a crew that regularly comes down from Toronto. We have a crew that comes from Cleveland. We have people coming from all over the region to skate here. Most of the people come from Southeast Michigan. You know, there's a park in Farmington Hills. There's a park in, right, right at Sculpture Park. Sorry, my bad. In Detroit, just outside Detroit. So, Hamtramck, thank you. All I can think is Buddy's Pizza. Where's Buddy's Pizza? So, what's nice about having these other skate parks built, because we have projects going on in Port Huron, all the way down to Wyandotte, and over here to Ypsilanti Township, is that more and more people are gonna come because there's more skate parks to go to. You know, when I go on trips with my family, I look for the skate parks when I go there, so I can go get some exercise at these skate parks. And people plan trips to come and visit several skate parks when they come to an area, and this is just to be some more people coming to the area. So, you'll find that it's gonna be one of the busiest athletic facilities in the township, if not the whole, you know, eastern, eastern side of the county.
Comments or questions? All right, I just want to say thank you, and appreciate all the work that you've done and excited about it.
Thank you for having us, giving us opportunity to speak about it.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear, you know, I don't know, can we just keep the flash drive? Or do you need it? Or then just send, yeah, just send it to Lisa, and she can get it to everybody if you want, or to me, yeah. We'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that. That was a great presentation. Next, we'll have YCUA. I don't know who's your spokesperson on the bond issue. All three of you. Just make sure you give your names for the record and your positions. That would be great, people who aren't here. This is actually under our agenda. It's the first item on, under new business.
Good evening. I'm Tom Coles with Miller Canfield. Actually represents, in this particular circumstance, YCUA is bond counsel. So, we put all the legal documents together, but it's just kind of a joint effort of the city and the township and YCUA. We kind of represent everybody. So, the specific item in front of you is a resolution that authorizes two things. It approves a contract among YCUA, the city, and the township. And the idea, and Scott will talk a little bit, or maybe a little bit more, about the project that's being undertaken at YCUA with respect to the treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. But again, the resolution specifically authorizes entering into this contract that provides for the financing and the construction by YCUA of the project. It provides for a share of the costs, a proportionate share between the township and the city based on usage of the treatment plants. But keep in mind also that while the contract talks about share of the overall cost, the contracting municipalities also cover actually more than 50% of the cost of these improvements that are gonna be going on. So, while we're using numbers in the $9 million range, about 60% of that's covered by contracting municipalities through rates and charges. Same idea here. So, the idea is that even though we talk about a full faith and credit pledge of the township to support this, that's only necessary if the rates and charges of the system, the township's portion of the system, would be insufficient. And they're certainly not anticipated to be, and there's no anticipation that the rates and charges would change at all. There's no increase anticipated in connection with the financing itself. So, it authorizes the execution of the contract. It also authorizes publication of a notice in the paper that has with it a right of referendum. So, under the statute in which we're borrowing the funds, or issuing these bonds, and the state's gonna provide the funding for this, it provides that the contract, you can enter into the contract as long as you publish a notice that provides to the electors of the township. And the city will have the same referendum rights with respect to the city's notice that they approved two weeks ago. That if a petition's filed within 45 days of the publication of the notice that's signed by not less than 10% of the registered electors, if a petition's filed, we cannot proceed to issue without actually putting, entering into the contract to a vote of the people. So, you know, a lot of people ask, well, what input can the citizens have? That's their right of referendum associated with entering into the contract. So, once that period expires, if no petitions filed in either the township or the city, YCUA then would then proceed to actually authorize the bonds at one of their upcoming board meetings. And then, the program, this qualifies for state funding. So, there's a state revolving fund that has, that YCUA has borrowed through, and the interest rates this year are at 2%, like a flat 2%, which is one of the better rates we've actually entered into over the years through the state program. So, it's a 20-year financing at 2%. So, I'll let Scott talk about the actual specifics of the project, and then Dwayne can have some, if there's any questions with respect to the allocations and the costs associated with that. Hopefully, we'll cover all your bases and questions.
Thanks, Tom. Scott Westover, Engineering Manager, YCUA. I'll try and give a brief overview of the two improvements we are hoping to undertake at the wastewater treatment plant. We have some work we're proposing to do on the fluidized bed incinerator that processes the solids that are generated through the treatment process. That incinerator was built as part of the expansion that was completed in 2006 of the plant. There are several key components that are past their design life and need to be replaced. The first is called the primary heat exchanger. It is a, basically, an energy recovery unit that warms up the air from the outside to go into the incinerator and then cools off the exhaust, kind of a heat exchange. That's exactly what it's called. And it is a very efficient part of the heat transfer process in the early incineration stage. The other key component that is looking, that we are looking to replace as part of this project is the first piece of treatment in the air pollution control downstream of the heat exchanger. It's called the Venturi Scrubber. It basically scrubs acids out of the effluent gases it proceeds from the heat exchanger into the first steps of the pollution control. In addition to that, there are several large expansion joints on the ductwork, some of which is 50-plus inches in diameter. I believe there are seven of those expansion joints that have experienced a lot of corrosion over the years of service. One of the key components of the project is that the roof has to be removed of the building. The primary heat exchanger is approximately 30 feet tall, has to come out in one piece. The new heat exchanger will come in through the roof, and we will be putting back a more friendly roof system for future removal and replacement. It's a kind of a, not the best system we have there right now. That's the highlights of the incinerator. The other piece that we are, the other improvement that we are looking to pursue as part of this loan are improvements to our west tertiary filters. They are one of the last steps in the treatment process of the water itself before it gets disinfected and sent out to the, back to the environment. Those filters were installed as part of the original plant construction back in the late '70s, early '80s. Are more of a technology that was used for drinking water instead of wastewater. So, over the years, they've become much less efficient as they have aged. And the, when the expansion was completed in 2006, new filters are put in on the east side of the plant. They are much more efficient and have performed a lot better, even though they are a lot younger. Their track record is a lot better than what we have on the west side. So, we're essentially looking to mirror the technology that was put in in 2006 and replace the existing, or the original technology that was put in in 1978 to '82, and get some, a lot better efficiency out of the tertiary filters. That's the highlights, and as quick as I could do it, unfortunately. But be happy to answer any questions on the, any more specifics.
Dwayne, did you want to present, or, no, just don't worry, if there was questions. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Trustee Monica Ross?
Madam Chair, thank you. You said a 2% interest rate. Is that fixed or variable?
That's fixed. Fixed for the 20 years, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee Gerald.
Sorry. I just had a question about, like, what does that mean that you'll go for a different type of roof that's more friendly for doing that in the future? Is it like a paneled section that you would just remove that portion instead of the whole piece?
The roof right now is made of precast concrete beams that, the best way I can describe it is they act kind of like an arch, whereas if you take one of these, there may be eight of them up there. If you take one of them out, all eight fall, basically fall apart. So, we're gonna replace those concrete beams that have been there since the original. So we're going to replace those concrete beams that have been there since the original construction of the plant in 1978 to 82 with a steel, a much more traditional steel girder and beam roof that, that's much easier to deal with to either remove and/or replace.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we're looking to do, yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for your work, our understanding is it's mostly going to be paid for by our contract communities, not Ypsilanti City or Township rate payers?
Right, so 60% will come from contracting municipalities, and then within that remaining 40%, the township's current share is about 75%, and the city's is 25%, and that's based on usage.
And I think in one of the meetings we're at, because we're, was it another bond dropping off, that it's not, it's actually going to be a revenue neutral or even revenue? I don't know what the proper term is, Mr. Finance Man. Yeah, Dwayne?
I'm Dwayne Harrington, Finance Director at YCUA, and yes, there will be a bond that comes off the books prior to this being added, so, and it actually, payments on the extinguishing debt is greater than what this new debt will be for the township, so.
It'll be saving, or?
It'll be a little less than what we currently are paying.
Yeah, see, the idea is this transaction would close in August, August 30th of 2019, the first payment wouldn't be due a year from then, so that's, that'll give plenty of time for that other deal to extinguish according to its normal terms, and then this one just gets added in there. Scott wanted a retractable roof for that, but that apparently was not.
Didn't work.
Only for sports stadiums, I'm not sure. I tried, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks for coming out, guys.
Great, thanks.
I don't know, do they don't need to stay around for the board meeting, do they?
Just Tom.
Oh, Tom, enjoy your evening, gentlemen.
All right, at this time we'll go back to the regular work session agenda, and the first item is the Recreational Marijuana Act next steps discussion. I know, hopefully that you all saw the email that Supervisor Stumble sent out, we've had several internal conversations since we adopted the opt-out resolution at our last board meeting, and this is kind of to move it forward. I think Supervisor Stumble and the group of us that have met have thought that it makes most sense to ask our attorney Doug Winters, who's done like the most work on this force at this point, to work together with the main owner planner, the senior planner, Dick Carlisle, and Supervisor Stumble's had contacts with him, and he's glad to lead up this project along with Doug Winters, and if it's all right with the board, I don't think we need an action, we're just looking for, is that all right with everybody? One, the, the goal would be for, like, because we each keep getting different, like, one of the things I've thrown out is like, okay, a 2,000 plant facility for grow-up, what does that mean? How many workers? Is it 300? Is it like Ford Motor Company, Rossville? How big's the parking lot? So we need those kinds of answers on the six different uses that are allowed under the state in order for us as a board to say if we're going to go and allow these businesses, where does it make sense for them to go? So part of their charge will be to find out as much information as they can about what is included in each one of those six businesses, what are their needs, how many employees, what kind of facility, that kind of stuff. And then Dick Carlisle, who's the zoning, you know, ordinance kind of person, to figure out, do we do overlay, do we do specific districts, do we just say that it can go in our normal B1, you know, to figure out what is the, the best process for our residents. And then once all that information gathered, I think one of the things Supervisor Stumble laid out in that memo, or her email, was that, and then at that point, have the, have like a working, not maybe working session, but a presentation with all the planning commissioners, all the township board, and to invite the residents to that forum, so everybody's hearing the same information at the same time as we make, figure out how we're going to move forward. So I don't know if there's any other comments on that, or any questions, if it's all right with the board, I don't think we necessarily need to vote on it as long as no one's like in total objection. If you're, if it's okay, then that's, will be the direction that we'll give.
Madam Chair, just a couple, I guess you could say a couple of things. If they can do this also in their investigation, it would be appreciative.
If they can do what, I'm sorry?
If they can do this also in their investigation, it would be appreciative. First things first, like the environmental factors as it relates to workers inside of these facilities, and safety measures, best practices as it relates to other states, that would be great. Just wondering what that looks like. And also I would love for them to do like a conversation on conversation with residents that live near business districts in order to get their opinions about how they would feel about provisioning centers near their neighborhoods. I think that is important, because I know there's been, you know, a little bit of miscommunication that has went out in regards to how these residents feel, and I would like to see if they could actually include that inside of a presentation. I think that's key and important. And otherwise than that, I think those were the two main things that I wanted to see, because I think, you know, obviously, the environmental factors are very important to me, and also worker's safety, and how does that commence inside of these facilities? Oh, and also, could you include how much these workers actually get paid? That would be great, too.
All right, any other comments about having our attorney and our planner to work on where we go next?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to, just make a quick comment that I'm glad to see that we're still moving forward on progressing in this, on this agenda item, that's all.
Madam Chair, just two other things, thank you Monica for bringing those up, because it sparked my thing. I'm also glad to see this continuing to move forward, which is, I think, what many of our board members had wanted to begin with, if not all, pretty sure all of us wanted to see this move forward, just to throw that out there. But one thing was, if there's any opportunity for like community engagement or something, I know that Doug and Dick are very interested in community engagement aspects, but just to make that, and then also if doing like a survey or something of our residents, if that would be a more, you know, holistic way to get more input from our residents, not just through maybe one forum, but possibly looking at sending out a mailer survey.
I think if we do a forum, that would make sense, but that can come back later once we get to that. Yeah, yeah. Did you have any comments, Attorney Winters? You okay?
No, I just would just remind the board that we do have a sunset provision of June 30th of 2020, doesn't seem that, it seems like 12 years.
Right.
In a far way, but this is already half, this year's almost gone, it seems like. So the LARA rule should be coming out here, I think, the next 30, 45 days, and so I think the sooner we get our arms around this issue and start looking at those six businesses, and also the environmental issues, and issues is, is this going to be, I know that Heather and Jimmy brought up issues about community benefits, should these workers also, you know, obviously, that's part of the living, we do have a living wage on our books that has not been updated, which I believe it should be updated, and maybe this is the opportunity to look at that as, as an issue as well. Amazon came out and, you know, if they can pay their hourway workers $15 an hour minimum wage, that's something that probably should be looked at in the context of our community benefit ordinance component. And we do have, we were the first community to actually pass the living wage ordinance many years back, but it may have fallen by the wayside in terms of keeping up with inflation. There's a lot of issues likely that probably can be brought under 110 here, and this may galvanize an opportunity to do a number of things that go beyond just the six businesses, but also take into account the issues that brought up by Heather, Monica, and Jimmy, and other trustees, Stan, and everybody else we've talked to, so I'm anxious to get going on this because I don't want to wait till the last minute and be cut short. I think if we say June 30th is a sunset provision, we should strive to have it done before then, so that way our work is done and our due diligence has already begun, but I would like to have it done before June 30th.
That's great, I just, my only comment I would have is, like, the idea about the wages, I think, is great, because I think one of my biggest concerns, especially, I don't know if y'all remember, but I think I mentioned a while ago, there was, back in the Detroit Free Press, one of the great investigative reporters, and I so apologize, I forget his name, that's not right, I should know that, he did a great, like, expose on people who were the legislator, and like really worked on making this thing come out, you know, and become laws, and now how they're all working for these huge corporations, and that the whole tobacco industry's in it, and I'm all about capital enterprise, but at the same time, if you're going to come make that kind of money and affect our community and stuff, just like we do with Ford Motor Company, General Motors, and the IFT, if there's any legal way to say, yes, you have to pay, you know, the $15 an hour and provide some kind of healthcare or something, I, that to me, because that's what we're about, if you're going to come to our community and affect it with these kind of, you know, everybody's saying, oh, there's so much money to be made, but the reality of it is the money's going to be made by corporations, and if our residents can get jobs at a decent rate, then I think that would be a different, the people would look at it a whole lot different in terms of what it is that we as a township board, so if there's any way you can, that we can legally do something like that, so that, I'm very excited about that. You brought up Attorney Winters, any other comments or questions about next steps?
I just have, and thank you Doug for calling it community benefits, I guess, whoever else came with it, with that term, thank you. I also want to see some specific community benefits in regards to trying to either give back somehow, some way, and also basically making sure that the individuals who take part in this business have some direct connection to Ypsilanti Township. I'm a bit concerned about what Karen said, large corporations coming in and taking over. I know in other communities licenses have been sold, so that, in my opinion, if we're going to talk about community benefits, then we need to break it all the way down into making sure that we're not having vested interests, whoever they may be, coming in and basically trying to take advantage of our community.
All right, any other comments or questions? Now we'll move on to the rest of the agenda, which is the regular agenda. Yep, second here, wearing two hats. First item, we have a resolution, we have a public hearing tonight on the creation of the Security Camera Special Assessment District for number 704 for the Cliffs Condos. Everything is in proper form, there's a resolution you have, the mailings went out according to the law, I think it's $9 and something. I have several, probably the time of the public hearing, I think one's opposed, and the rest of the emails I've received are for putting that. It's one camera that's going to go at the corner intersection of Cliffs and Grove Road, and it's actually going to be on their property, so the Cliffs will actually, through their, already through their condominium association, will pay for the electricity and all that, so this is really just paying for the maintenance and operation of the camera, because as you know, the township is paid for the, we actually purchased a camera. So is there any questions on that? So that'll be the first thing we'll do, is open that public hearing, take comments, and then if the board is so inclined, approve the resolution. You have the minutes of the May 7th work session, our regular meeting, any comments or changes, additions on that? You have the statements and checks, the treasurer's report, did you want to do your legal update now, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I think satisfying, Larry, I'll do it during the work session, because I know he wants to move quickly sometimes, so. I did send over to the board a graph that I, I did not prepare the graph, it was done by Jessica, but it's actually one we've talked about before, all roads that lead to Rome type of thing, it's all roads, lead to neighborhood stabilization, so hope you can look at that and maybe make suggestions, because I think it's something that should be a constant reminder of all the different tools in the toolbox that we tried to use to achieve that center goal there, so I thought that was at least, rather than me always talking about the different tools, to do that graph. The one thing, though, it still is on my mind quite a bit, I know it is on the board as well, too, is we can't forget about what's going on with Forbes Cleaners, that's been somewhat of a temporary, I don't want to say setback, but the funding has, is a, is an issue right now with what is needed to complete the entire remediation and cleanup. I did receive an email today, this evening, from Mary Miller, in which she says that the contractors are planning to install the vapor mitigation systems in three houses located at 928, 936, and 944 David Street. So we do know that those three specific houses have to have that mitigation system installed there because of the findings that came about during the perka from the dry cleaners that leached into the David Street area. We're still dealing with those issues about the funding to complete the cleanup of Forbes' cleaners, and it's very critical because that Ecorus Road is part of what is going to be, maybe considered at some point in time by the board as part of a form-based zoning code amendments, and that area of day, of Ecorus Road is a very important component to have the commercial rehabilitation. Right now, Mary Miller is estimating that the additional investigation will not be completed until December of 2019, and I'm just going to keep making that at the forefront, because again, I have a lot of serious concerns that people talk about environmental justice and things of that nature, but this neighborhood is one that I don't want to see fall by the wayside, because it does have some very legitimate environmental issues that need to be dealt with, and I'll keep that in the spotlight as much as possible. I know the full-time board members feel the same way, and the trustees have also weighed in on this issue on a regular basis, too, so I just want to keep the spotlight on Forbes' cleaners. You did see this past week, the fruits of our labor come to fruition for the demolition of Thurston and Kettering Schools. Those were work that took, what, four or five years, I think, a bond, sinking fund mileage to be approved, but Mike and Bill and everybody on the team kept after the school district. I know that Supervisor Stumble met with former superintendent, and then the current superintendent, to keep that in the spotlight as well, and those have now been completed, and I know that will, that also is part of neighborhood stabilization, if you can demolish buildings that are attractive nuisances that were broken into, that were set on fire, that were just vandalized, when you see graffiti on a building that's been tagged, that sends off very, very, not very attractive message to people that are looking to buy a home in that neighborhood, so that, those are gone now, so that's a great news as well. And then I would also indicate to you that right now that we're getting close to signing, or the county is signing a contract with OHM, they may have already signed it, to start work on the Washtenaw County Reimagined Washtenaw. I did speak with Key Bank person from Kansas City today, who had not been kept apprised by the Camelot People Attorneys in regards to what was needed to actually get that one remaining easement, and after speaking with him, I talked with Nathan Vogt and Treasurer Doe, and I did release the $5,000 check to them for them to complete their review process as previously authorized by the board back last December, and I'm confident, or at least he's confident, that within 30 days we'll have that one, that last remaining sidewalk easement, so that it will not delay the project going forward, but it will, there'll be no gap in that sidewalk project. So again, I've tried to emphasize to the board, and then as much as, as well as the department directors and staff, that sometimes when you have so many things going on, you don't know what to do first, and sometimes you just need to take a timeout and say, before we go on to something new, let's check this box off here and have it done. So there were a few boxes that were checked off, I believe, this week with the demolition of Thurston and Kettering School. I'm pretty confident right now that we'll check that box off for Reimagined Washtenaw, and then even though you go on to other things the very next day, I think sometimes we forget to take a moment and savor the successes that you have achieved as a board, and even with the Forbes' cleaners, the mitigation systems have been installed, that would not have been, that would not have happened before the board continuing to put pressure and authorizing our office to, use Monica's words, use all means necessary to get that property off the auction list a couple of years ago when it was going to be sold to the highest bidder, and we know that would not, that would not have resulted in any kind of mitigation being done on that site. So sometimes we do need to just step back and count your... So sometimes we do need to just step back and count your successes, because you have may have, you've had many of those, but there's still many more still to, to, to deal with. But that's kind of the report I'll do tonight, so, Mr. Doe?
Madam Chair.
Any comments or questions, Trustee Gerald Rowe?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Doug, I know you were on like such a positive note right there at the end, but I just, I read your email recently about our lovely county treasurer who's not with a right of first refusal letter, which she's lawfully required to by March 31st of the year. And I just, you know, publicly would like to say how disappointed I am that it continues to be this same repeat of treating our township differently than every other township, and it's, it's not acceptable to me, it shouldn't be acceptable to anyone. I appreciate that you're a fellow woman and Democrat in office, you still have to do the right thing when you come to your job to do every day. So this is the second time, you started with the Forbes dry cleaner. If you all remember, last year we had the worst time getting that property off of the auction list. So thank you Doug for being so tenacious, and our board for being so strong and really pushing back against that, but, you know, just her behavior continues to be completely unacceptable to me. So I know that Mike requested in an email to, like, have Karen reach back out and ask for the list of properties that will be on there, just so for everyone else that understands that, we like to look at the properties that are tax foreclosures within our community, because we would have the right of first refusal, which we would then take those properties and help habitat for our community's stabilization, da-da-da-da-da. So, completely disappointed in Catherine McClery, again.
And I have a, and I have a plan to acquire those, that list, so I'll just leave it at that.
That's right. Any other comments or questions for attorney? I just want to say, the Reimagined Washtenaw project, Pittsfield's done their piece of running down the sidewalks. I've never heard of anything so most difficult to do, when you're actually improving people's property and making the folks who either shop at your places or live at your places be able to get to a bus safely, and we have money for it. And so this has been going on, I think, three different CDBG HUD dollar awards for three different years, and I know that we wouldn't have this piece if it was not for Nathan Vogt and for Doug Winters and the work that they've done. And so hats off to both of them for just being tenacious and not letting these attorneys just go to sleep or wherever, whatever it is that they do that can't relate to their business owners, who can't relate to people who actually spend money and walk in front of their places, you know, because they got to catch a bus because they live in their apartments and stuff, so. But we, well, we'll move on, but we will not forget Camelot Apartments and a couple of the others down there, so. Anyways, thanks, you guys, for the work, hard work. Is there anything else for attorneys? All right, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is, the first item on our new business is a resolution for the, what you heard, the YCA present, so we will read the resolution into the record and with a motion to adopt that and support, and any comments that'll be taken on that. I think it's kind of exciting that they're repairing, things that have to be repaired, it just so happens the stars have aligned for us, and it's a 2% interest rate, which is, you know, you guys all know that's a no-brainer these days, so. Any other comments on new business number one? New business number two, three, and four are all master deeds and exhibits and bylaws and elevations for three different projects, all Majestic Lakes, all Lombardo projects. They're very detailed, my understanding is attorneys have looked at those and everything's in proper form to approve those as outlined in the very detail. Michael Radzi.
Good evening. The first two are procedurally exactly the same, they're the approval of the mass, original master deed and bylaws. The first for the Majestic Lakes Estates Phase, which is the far southeast section of Majestic Lakes. And the second is for the Majestic Ponds, or Ponds at Majestic Lakes section, which is the smaller section off Textile Road, where here on River Drive dead ends and then becomes here on River Lane. I do, this afternoon, in going over these in a little bit more detail, there was one section in the master deed for both of these that we would like to modify, and I'll explain it now, and then I will give, Madam Clerk, a typed-out request of what that modification would be. Doug and I spoke about this briefly on the phone earlier, and then I've spoke with Mark Robuck, who is with Lombardo Homes and is here tonight, and he's in agreement as well. In the master deed, in Article Number Eight, Section B6, there's a section there that addresses what the HOA is able to change or modify in the future, and there was a standard statement there that apparently is common in most residential master deeds, that gives them the ability to partially or completely make any kind of modification to leasing restrictions. And as you know, both in the development agreement, and we would like, it's also in the bylaws that are attached and before you tonight, there is a very specific leasing restrictions for all of these residential communities, follows the same thing that the board has adopted in previous residential communities, such as Redwood, Nautica Point, which prohibits any subsidized rent payments, and then puts very specific restrictions on how and for how long a private home can be rented. So in order to correct that problem, we've come up with a simple modification of that one sentence to be, and I would quote it, "The modification of leasing restrictions to be only more restrictive than otherwise required in the development and the bylaws." That would give them, and in speaking with Mr. Robuck, he said, "Look, it's not, it's not uncommon, and it may happen where, in the future, they decide they want to completely eliminate all leasing." And so by making it, giving them the ability to do something, modify it to be more restrictive, would give them the ability to accomplish that if they ever chose to do so in the future." So that's the only change that came up at, at the last minute, and I'll give that to you in writing, so that you can incorporate it in the motion if you so desire to do so.
Do you think?
I'm sorry?
It's Article Eight.
In the master deed, Article Eight, Section B is in boy, number six.
Were there any comments or questions in regards to number one, or number two, or number three, for master deed bylaws and elevations for Majestic Lakes Estates condos, or for Majestic Ponds condos?
Yes, I would also like to note that when the board approved the development agreements for both estates and ponds, they required the developer to bring back the elevations for your approval. So in addition to the master deed and bylaws, the proposed elevations are also in the packet for your approval. They are the exact same elevations that you have approved for other Lombardo developments in that same general area of the township. The third one for Village of Majestic Lakes is actually a second amendment. The original master deed and bylaws were recorded back in December, there was a first amendment to correct a technical deficiency in February, and now before you is the second amendment to the master deed. Make sure I pull the right one up here. This, essentially, the most important part of this is that this adds Phase Two. So the Village of Majestic Lakes was divided by Lombardo into two different phases for construction purposes. Phase One already had the underground utilities in, they just needed to be tweaked in order for them to build homes, and they've accomplished all that in their building. Phase Two had no underground, no streets, no nothing, and so they bifurcated the villages into two sections. This amendment adds the legal description for the land in Phase Two, and it also adds the additional 47 residential units for Phase Two, and makes some other technical amendments to the site plan. And just like the first two, I would ask, there are five amendment points, I would ask that we add a sixth, which would address the deficiency in the original master deed for the rent restrictions, and the language would be exactly the same as I described for the others. And I'll, again, I'll type that up and have that available for you.
Any other comments or, any comments or questions for Michael Radzi? These three new business items? All right, so you're going to type and give that to us before the meeting? Okay.
For yourself, Mr. Winters, and for Lisa.
Okay, and you said the attorney was here?
Mark Robuck, I don't, he's not an attorney, he's Vice President of Land Development for Lombardo Homes.
You said they agreed to all those changes? Yeah. Maybe during the-
Oh, sorry. Development coordinator.
Maybe during the meeting, we'll just have you go to the microphone, if you give your name and your position, and just say that you're in concurrence with those changes. It'd be great.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, um, next is the, this request to approve the amended agreement with the Washtenaw County for the sub-award with the federal financial assistance for a proposed bus stop shelter at Schooner Cove and South Huron River Drive. You've seen this before, I think at the last meeting, what's happened is, we've, they've taken a look at engineers, and they're really trying to make sure the bus shelter itself and the cement that's poured, actually, is an extension to have sidewalks laid on both sides that will connect to what's already there. So because of this, it's a little bit more work for them and more money for the redesign, which means, because we're getting the money passed through or paid through from the CDBG HUD funds allocated in Insley Township for this project, that we have to take this agreement back to the board for amendment. So that's what this is. Any questions? Next.
Just, I know that usually when they redo, or when they do these fundings for the bus shelters, that they all have to be ADA compliant, something that would be true for this as well?
Yes, absolutely. And Doug Winters is really, our attorney's really made sure to ask all the right questions. Next is, it's related to new business number five, new business number six, is a request to approve an amended agreement with OHM for the additional work to the pathway for the Schooner Cove's bus stop, and the amount of $6,001 or $10 to be budgeted in the line item listed out there, contingent upon approval of the budget amendment. So this is actually pay OHM to do that additional design work that goes in conjunction with getting the extra money from the county. Any questions? Number seven, new business, number seven is the request to approve a skate park agreement between Insley Township and Washtenaw County by the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Parks Commission. This is actually the agreement that was referenced by Megan Bonafellow earlier in the work session, and that has, that our attorney, Winters, has worked on by meeting with both, I know, our insurance company and also with the skate park people and the county parks and rec folks, to make sure that's in align. Did you have any comments on it, Mr. Winters?
Yes, I would at least, I think Angie Virges may have been here earlier, she may, she may have left, I think, but, and Larry, Larry obviously is here tonight, but, it's some, you know, it's sometimes, you know, this is, we all stand on the shoulders of people that sit up here at this board many, many years ago. And why I'm saying that in this context is that the property that is actually going to be utilized as a skate park was purchased by the Township Board of Trustees back in 1980. And at that time, you have Mr. Ron Allen was supervisor, you had Ann Stepp was clerk, Ruth Ann was treasurer at the time, you had J.D. Hall, who was a trustee, and Roy Wilbanks, Wes Prater. And the reason why I'm mentioning that, at the time, obviously, when they bought that property, they didn't necessarily have in mind that one day it would be used as a skate park, but they did have in mind that it could be incorporated into the township's recreation plan. And so here you have, almost 40 years later, the realization that this property can now be utilized for a recreational amenity that, at that time, nobody had any idea would become so popular, much less a Olympic event, a sporting event. And so as you look, you know, as you look forward to approving a skate park agreement and have our property used for that purpose, recreational, just reflect back that somebody was, people up here 40 years ago almost, actually thought that it would be a great idea to acquire property, use unknown at the time, and as you make decisions during your tenure here, it's going to affect future generations positively as well. So this is just a good opportunity to, let's look back for a moment at the vision that they had, that this could be used for recreational purposes at the time. It is a 15-year agreement, we did have good meetings with the MML Insurance, they learned quite a bit as well about this skate park. We also have agreed that the county is going to turn over to the township, when it's constructed, the entire notebook that contains all of the construction plans, the, see, all the approvals, all the checklist showing that it's going to be, that it was in proper form when the township received it, because while there's a 15-year minimum agreement that we will operate this, I think we all have the expectation that once it's turned over to us, we will maintain this skate park for as long as it's in existence. We also requested of their design team to develop a very simple and straightforward maintenance form that we can utilize on a regular basis, because the only time that governmental amenity is not a defense, is if there is a defect in the design or maintenance of amenities such as this. And so we want to make sure we have in place a regular scheduled maintenance, not only because of liability, but because it's the right thing to do. And if we have something that goes awry during the time it's being used, this maintenance schedule will point that out for us, and we can correct it as we go along. At the same time, the county has agreed that when it comes time for signage to go up in regards to how the park would be operated, that they would defer to the township for the language that they want to have on those signs. And so I just provided you with one sample copy of what I found on the internet, by no means is that one that you have to use, but just to show that there are many variations out there in regards to the rules that you want the skate park to operate under, and make sure it's done safely, and at the same time, that it's done respectfully. And so I do think they're going to be, that the, Trevor is right, I think it's going to be a destination location for many, many people. I think the visitors, the convention bureau would be one that would also like to have this as part of their reason why you should come to this area and visit, and we have hotels going up over here on the, here on Street. And so again, I think it's a very, very exciting opportunity, we're still doing the Phase Two out there on some, on some soil investigations, but the skate park agreement is in proper form, our insurance people have agreed that it's going to be, with its slight modifications, acceptable from their standpoint. And so I think we're getting just a little bit closer to the finish line, but again, just take a moment and reflect back on that board in 1980 that acquired this property, because again, but for that vision, that back then, this could have gotten to another community. So I just think it's important to always remember, I know Karen calls me the historian, and that's not a bad thing, but I think it's, it's a tribute to all of our boards, both past, present, and future, that we always try and look ahead and do things that can set up future boards for, for success, for success as well. This is one of those, I think, that just kind of needs to be, needs to be noted.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on, next we have, on the agenda, number eight, under new businesses, a change order, number one, in the amount of $715, and the proposal to conduct a subsurface investigation at 1150 Midway, that's for the skate park, the amount of $5,570 with AKT Pierces, and a total amount of $6,285 to budget in the line items outlined there, in contingent upon approval of the budget amendment. This goes along with that, is actually to authorize the change order to pay for the next set of work that AKT Peerless is going to do in order for the skate park to go in. I don't know, just a comment, we've had the skate park, the bus shelter, the community center, and that, well, next month you'll see the Grove Road bike path, and it's like, getting the dollars from, you know, from outside sources- And it's like, getting the dollars from, you know, from outside sources is wonderful, but it's like you have agreements on that and then you have, you know, two or three agreements with the county and then making sure those are right. Just the amount of time, assuming, I think Supervisor Stumble touched on their email today, is just like, we've all been like going crazy and swamped and without our consultants to help us, but everybody trying to keep on track with three or four different contracts. And as you can see, something else gets found out and then they have to be amended and stuff. So anyways, I think we got it right tonight in the board pack and hopefully we'll get these all signed right. But it has been tremendously time-consuming on several consultants' parts and also on a lot of staff. I know Lisa's worked a lot on them and Attorney Winters and myself, so, and I know Angie Virges and Supervisor Stumble, so I think that's what she was expressing in the email is like, there's just a lot going on right now. So anyways. Next is a request from Mike Radsick for authorization to seek legal action for the public nuisance at Ravenwood, at 2358 Ravenwood, 594 Ellis Road, 2830 East Michigan for $30,000 in its budget. Is there any comments or questions? You guys want your presentation from Michael or not? All right, thank you, Michael. You did such a great job on your presentation, your pictures. No one has any more questions. Next is number 10, to approve the agreement with the Washtenaw County Road Commission. This is for dust control. We do this every year. This is actually budgeted, so we don't have to change the budget to do that. I'm not sure when they're gonna need it with the amount of rain we needed. Maybe, you know, normally we do, we actually pay for extra one later on, so maybe this will be one of those years when we don't have to and that this original contract will be enough to take care of the dust in the township. Any questions? Next is a resolution to amend the 2019 designation of depositories. This has to do with a change in where we're putting our money, right? Larry?
No.
You can explain.
Well, we normally had two banks. We had Key Bank and we have Bank of Ann Arbor that would also collect payments, tax payments. Key Bank backed out this year and will not be able to do it in effort to try to get people on the west side of the town, not have to come all the way over here if they want to make their payment in personal. We talked to the Washtenaw Credit Union and, well, we've talked to a number of banks, but the bank seems to not want to do this anymore. They're, it's all in their bylaws and everything. So Washtenaw Credit Union agreed to do it, so we needed to add those to the depository.
Thank you. Good job. Any other questions on that? Next we have the budget amendment, which we have for the budget amendment, which is number nine for the year. Get my page. We have, we're gonna amend the general fund by $46,410 and that's $40,300 of that is for the election. As you know, we didn't budget for any elections and we already have an election this year, WISD, on August the 6th. And it's also for this CDBG, the $6,110 for the bus shelters, which is again, a pass-through, but we have to budget their money in so that we can pay our consultants or whoever's working on that project. The fire fund budget is for the firefighters' contract and the increases that they received under that for $74,405 for the remainder, for the remainder of the year. And the bike sidewalk wreck roads general fund two budget by $8,435. That's for the, what you saw earlier tonight on the agenda, the AKT skate park for their environmental testing, that what they're gonna be doing. And then finally on there is $122,467, which some of that is for a generator, buying a generator, which you approved to go out for bid on the agenda night. And the rest is, my understanding is gonna be for the, it's more than just a generator, right? It's for the construct, installation? Or is the 122 just a generator? I'm sorry.
There's, yeah, related to this project this evening, there's two requests. One is, the board previously approved a scope of work with OHM last December and we've been working with them to develop what's needed, figure out how large of a generator, what type is gonna be best suited, so on and so forth. And then we had to bifurcate. Originally, we're gonna determine which product was best suited and recommended, purchase it with the board's approval, and then do one bid for the contract for the installation construction work. We were then directed that we had to bifurcate it and do one bid for the generator purchase and a separate bid with board approval in advance for the construction. So before you tonight, we did bid out the generator. Unfortunately, we only received one bid. It was from Cummins, which was the company, this is the exact product that we had originally determined was best suited, and their bid was for $83,767. OHM had estimated it would cost about $85,000, so the bid came in just slightly lower, but right on target, more or less. So we're asking the board to award that bid to Cummins so that we can place the order so they can start building the generator. It's about eight to 12-week lead time, I think, is what I heard before. It would be completely built and ready to be delivered to the site for construction to begin. If the board approves the purchase, we will place the order. Cummins will then assist OHM in providing some of the additional details that they will need to finish writing the bid package for the construction bid. And then that bid package will come back to you for approval in June. And then we would bid it out and come back to you in July to award the construction bid and then construction would probably occur or begin in August and it would take a couple of months. So we'd like to get this done and in and operable before the snow flies. And then the second item is the second scope of work for OHM to complete this. This would include the bifurcation of the two bids, all of the civil engineering specs for the construction bid package that would go out, construction administration, in other words, double-checking the parts and the supplies that are brought in by the contractor to make sure they meet code, doing the as-builts for the township to have to know what's both above ground and underground, and some very limited construction observation. Our chief building official, Dave Bellers, has graciously volunteered him and his staff to be the primary people to oversee the construction and make sure it's done according to code and according to the approved plans. But there are some things that require an engineer to look at that they're not capable of doing, and that limited service is what OHM would be providing for onsite observation. So we've worked with them. My goal is to keep the cost at an absolute minimum for both the product and the construction and the oversight, but at the same time, to make sure that it's a quality machine that will service what essentially is the second-largest law enforcement center in the county for the Sheriff's Department, next to Hogback. And it's a very important and very critical installation. Everything they do now is wireless and digital and without power for an extended period of time. Our police response and our police operation would take a pretty severe hit. So it's very important that we get a modern and very capable standby generator in place at this facility.
Any other comments or questions?
I just had a quick question.
And Elliot Smith from OHM is here to answer any technical questions that I won't be able to handle.
Yeah.
Mike or-
Go ahead. Trustee Eldridge and then Treasurer Doe.
Mike or Elliot, it's either one. It's, when I look at the cost of the OHM portion, 38.7 is roughly equal to 46% of the cost of the generator or over 30% of the total package. And if we can't lower those costs, can we at least get a breakdown of what we're paying for? Attend one meeting with the owner to review a bid tabulation and technical evaluation. What does that cost us? It just seems like it's a really large amount to oversee the placement of a generator. There's some places in here where I see, and you mentioned, that we're gonna oversee the construction, but there's also a bullet point or two I found where they're gonna assist the owner in construction bidding and those type of things. It seems like we're duplicating a service.
Well, they are doing all of the bidding. They're gonna assemble the entire bid package, just like we did with the generator. They were there with the clerk's office to open the bids, to review them. And they're going to do all of that.
It just seems like a high amount. I'm just wondering if we can get a breakdown sent to us to explain exactly what the cost is per each of the 26 bullet points?
Yes. Okay. It's billed on an hourly basis. Those invoices come directly to me to be reviewed and approved. Sometimes I sign them right away. Sometimes I call them and send them back and they get modified, but in the end, we make sure that we're paying for what we should be paying for and not more. So yes, to answer your question, I'll be happy to share all of that with you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Treasurer Doe.
First question I have, Mike, is have we talked to the sheriff about helping out a little bit on this, cost of this total project?
I haven't had that conversation directly yet. I've reached out through channels and trying to figure out exactly who the right person to talk to, whether it's him or County Administrator Dill or someone with their county facilities. So that conversation will occur, it just hasn't yet.
And I guess to Elliot, my second question is, do we have any ballpark of the installation cost?
As of right now, I can't, we don't know exactly how much the installation cost is gonna be. If we had to estimate, it'd be about $150,000.
$150,000 to install an $80,000 generator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Joe Rowe.
I think that Larry or Treasurer Doe just spoke to this a little bit, but I know last time we were talking about asking the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department if they could fund some of this. I don't know, I was trying to look back for the agenda that we approved it, but we just spent so much money on reopening the Holmes Road Police Facility. And I know at the end of the day, it's about our safety and our police officers, but this is a shared service that we pay for. We pay, you know, to have their police officers work for us and we love them, we're so thankful for that, but like this is, this is too, they need to fund some of this. At the end of the day, it's their building where their employees work.
That's true, and I'm gonna try to make that happen to the extent possible. Our contract with them says if we want the officers we contract for to report to work in our jurisdiction, we're required to provide a suitable facility. But having said that, they do use it for training, they use it, you know, there's federal agencies and state agencies that work with them that use the facility.
Right.
They do dog training there as well. So I do agree that it would be a fair ask to ask them to help pay for a significant portion of this.
Yeah, I mean, especially it being the second-largest. I mean, I just personally am not, I can't like agree to approve this if we haven't asked and also don't know what their commitment to this project is.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Eldridge.
Mike, I mean, you just brought up something that made it pop in my mind. They do other trainings and everything there. Do they charge other agencies and generate revenue when they do some of those trainings at that location?
Not to my knowledge. It's all in-house training, with the possible exception of some of the canine training, but to my knowledge at least, Trustee Eldridge, there's no revenue generated from it, but I can ask that question.
It's our building, we'd be the one charging.
Well, not necessarily.
I mean, I mean-
If they wanna run a training, they don't have to tell us they're running a training.
Oh, you're right.
Charge.
You're right.
So if they're gonna generate revenue off the building, they should pay something back for it.
And just like the, I mean, I would, I guess I've never read the contract language myself, but a suitable building to report to work to, I mean, I could stretch that. Like, what does that mean? What is a suitable building to report to work to? So I just think that at the end of the day, everyone has a mutual interest to get a generator there and up and running, but I also think everyone has a mutual obligation to pay some of that.
Yep, I hear you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back on-
Trustee Monica.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to go back on Treasurer Doe's comment or question about how much it would cost to get installed and the cost was $150,000. Is that normal? I mean, is that a regular cost? I mean, it's, yeah.
If I can add some clarity to that figure, installation would also include the hookup of the generator, a transfer switch, plumbing, the slab that the generator sits on, foundations for that slab, and re-striped work and a warranty. So it's not just merely the, it's the hookup, there's additional services also included.
But is that normal? Like, for that much cost? I mean, I understand the other services, but-
Right. For 350 kilowatt diesel generator, that's fairly standard for installation.
Okay, so that kind of goes back on Trustee Joe Rowe's point, is that we probably need some additional assistance.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Treasurer Doe.
You know, I have to, you know, a transfer switch, I understand the size of the wire and everything, but I'm thinking of the one I put in my home. The unit was, I don't know, $6,000 and I think the installation was less than $1,000. And I understand, but it's a transfer, you still have to have the transfer switch, you have to have all the wiring. And I understand you got plumbing if you have a cooling system and everything on it, but that just blows my mind, $150,000.
I can tell you that OHM's engineers want to put this on an eight-inch-thick concrete slab and based on the size and the weight, our building official is insisting on footings because he knows it's hard clay and he knows that over time, it's gonna shift. And, I mean, there's issues. This is a large piece of machinery.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I can't, I can't imagine more than $5,000 or $6,000 with the concrete. Now, Mike-
Couldn't tell you. There's a slab and a foundation and then there has, part of the design is a concrete, from the parking lot to the back of the building, a concrete approach for the fuel trucks to be able to access it and be code compliant. I can tell you, when I was looking for engineering assistance, I talked first with Stantec and then with OHM. Stantec said plan on $250,000, $300,000 total project. OHM's estimate was a little less and their hourly rates were better, so we went with OHM to help us with the design and the bidding and everything else. So it's 80 plus 150 is exactly on target from what both firms told us originally.
I know.
And in the end, we can just leave the existing generator there and hope for the best. We don't want to spend the money. Pardon me?
Oh, sorry.
It's- It's a 40-some-year-old 75-kilowatt generator and the electrical engineers have determined that we need minimum of 300 kilowatt that's capable of running for an extended period of time should there be a disaster. And the one that's there now will run a couple of lights and whatnot, but it doesn't run nearly the entire building.
Madam Chair. I'm not arguing the need for the generator.
Yeah.
I'm arguing the cost of insulation.
Hey, if we can bid it out for a whole lot less, that would be great.
It's not happening. Everything's coming high. I mean, maybe we're wrong. I know many, many years ago, I don't know, maybe since you've been here, Larry, or even before, we were looking at a generator for here and I know it was over $200,000, which is the reason why we kind of like said no.
That's correct.
I remember, that was a long time ago. And I don't, that wasn't the court, that was just this building, because we figured the court did come up with the idea though. Maybe we could talk, because since, if there's a disaster and stuff, I mean, this will be the eastern side of the county's center. I know this building is designated as a place for people to go, you know, to, for housing or for food and to sleep and all that at this place, but maybe there's like emergency management, like county, you know, because they have the whole separate department and stuff, and so maybe that's a place to look too, so maybe we can get an answer on that before the bid specs come back, if the board approves the bid specs for installation or to purchase that thing. And then the other item is the actual design. Maybe we can get an answer on that before we actually bring those back and agree to go out to bid, because those gotta come back to go out to bid. And the goal is to get those back here in the June meeting and then authorized to go to bid.
Well, tonight we're asking for permission to place the order for the machine.
Right, I know that.
That can start building. In June, you will see the bid package for construction prior to us bidding it out and then the awarding of the bid would come back to you again.
But tonight, we're approving to pay OHM to do, put that all together.
Correct.
Right. And that was budget amendment that we were on, so I think it took care of. Any other questions?
And I would just also mention, I can tell you, part of the cost of the generator itself was the sound package. We considered going with natural gas, which is significantly quieter than diesel, but it would cost two to three times as much just for the machine.
it would cost two to three times as much just for the machine, and it would be significantly larger than the large diesel machine we're asking to buy. So we added sound deadening, it's all self-contained within a single enclosure, including the fuel tanks, above-ground fuel tanks, and the sound rating was designed to meet our zoning code requirements because it sits within 12 or so feet of the property line to the parcel to the south that is yet to be developed, and not knowing what that could potentially be in the future, we had to meet the zoning requirement, so that added some cost.
Getting ordinances.
Madam Chair. And quite honestly, the, some of the manufacturer's reps said, look, we can upsell you to a natural gas generator. It's going to be way bigger, it costs you a lot more money, but if something happens and the gas line to the building is ruptured, you're out of luck. You can have diesel fuel delivered in a disaster. It might, you might have to wait a little bit, but if your gas line gets ruptured, you're out of luck. So for a lot of different reasons, we went with a diesel engine as opposed to natural gas.
Any comments or questions, Trustee Gerald Row?
Yeah, just, I mean, I hear you that it's the ordinance, but like, if we're talking about like a natural disaster where all of the power is out, and we're concerned that our police officers don't have energy, like, is the noise from a generator really worth? I mean, how many thousands of dollars are we talking about?
It's not a whole lot of money. I don't have the exact line item. It added a few thousand dollars.
A few, or like?
You're not recommending we violate our ordinances, are you?
I am never suggesting that, but I just, you know, I don't understand, like, I mean, I want to know how much money that added to the cost.
I can find out.
If you could find out. Because if it's like an extra $20,000, then I, maybe I would suggest that in the case of a natural disaster.
No, I don't believe it was that much. I can find out.
Sorry, Mike, I'm being.
You're referring to the sound dampening versus the.
I hear what you're saying, and you're only going to use it when we're down, so it's like, we could have an emergency.
I mean, God is always like a good reason to oversee something.
Well, plus, it fires up once a week and runs for a period of time for.
How long?
I think 20 to 30 minutes every week.
That's, okay, well, I just want to know how much it costs. We're spending a lot of money on this thing, and I, like, it makes me uncomfortable.
I'll get you.
Kind of a tight wad, Mike.
I'll get you those line items.
Thank you.
No problem.
But that is in the total cost of the package of the 80-some thousand, isn't it? Or is that going to be in addition?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? That was the budget amendment. We have authorization in bids, which we actually covered, item one and two already. One was award the low bid to buy the generator. You're actually going to be asked to vote on that tonight. And number two was to approve the services contract with OHM on that. Was there any other question? Do you need to have the Representative Elliot Smith, sorry, I should know how to say it, it's my granddaughter's name, to stay, or is it okay if, you want to stay for the meeting? Any other questions you can think of? All right. Finally, on our agenda is number three, the authorization to waive the financial policy and seek three quotes for the repair of the roof on the Civic Center Maintenance Garage, and then to authorize the three full-time officials to select the vendor and enter into contract with the project. My understanding, this is leaking right now, that's why we asked to waive the policy to get that fixed, and if we have to wait to come back to accept the bids, that's going to be the end of June, and then the construction can't start until after that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Treasurer Doe, I know you were involved in inspecting and coming up with the things that need to be done and designing those specs for the actual quotes.
No, we just like to move forward. We're thinking it's going to be maybe a $20,000 job, but if we, if it, you know, once we get through, we'll, if it's higher, much higher than that, we'll just, we'll come back.
And we would, if the board so gives us that authority, we would bring, you know, bring, we'd have to sign the contract, but we'd still bring that back or send it out by email so that you would know what it is that the board, or the three full-time people agreed to. Any comments or?
It's pretty bad.
Doe knows.
Yeah, the whole, if you go out there and look, Stan, you can see the, almost 30% of the ceiling is all falling, and so that's part of the quote too, is to put the insulation and stuff back up. It's pretty bad.
Any other comments or questions? All right, that's it for work session. We'll see you back at, the work session's over at 6:33. We'll see you at seven o'clock sharp. Thank you, everybody.